I gave it a sad whack on the way out, so I wanted to give it a good one coming back. We're gonna pick it up with four seventy-eight, a conservation commission appointment. Do we have anybody here? They might be in the hallway waiting.
I'm not expecting anyone for this one, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna let the board know that Gail Lima has attended her resignation to the commission. From the records that I was able to see, she had started with the commission in two thousand and one. So, thank you to Gail for her many years of service. And I have received a recommendation from our conservation director, John Keely, for an alternate member of the commission to be made a full-time member for the term to be ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And with that, Mr. Chairman, John's recommendation, I wish to appoint Kent Moffett to the Conservation Commission and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to Gail for her time on the board. I got to know her a little bit through as liaison to that department. And congratulations to Kent. Kent, son of a gun, he applies for every... He applies for everything that comes down the pike here. He served on the numerous committees that we've had over the last several years. So, congratulations to everybody involved.
Anybody else? All right, I'll be looking for a motion. So moved?
Second.
Second, moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five zero zero. All right. Moving right along, we got four seventy-nine approval for Maytown Meeting Hybrid. I saw Mr. Byer hiding back there. Amy, hello. Come on up.
Gentlemen.
Good evening.
It's with great regret I come before you to ask for us to be able to have a hybrid meeting for the upcoming Maytown Meeting. Had you asked me a month ago, I would have said we'll be meeting in person. But this world keeps changing on us a little bit at a time. And it looks like at this point, we need to continue with the hybrid meeting for one more time. I will be urging all town meeting members who would be comfortable with it to show up in person. Because I strongly believe that town meeting works better in person. The level of discussion is much better. Things certainly tailed off a bit when we were dealing only with hybrid meetings or with Zoom meetings. So, as I say, I regret having to do this, but it's the correct thing to do at this time, to be able to allow all town meeting members to participate.
Amy, do you want to add anything?
No.
Just here for morals and important.
I'm just here for moral support.
And you know my morals and need support.
All right, discussion from the board. Mr. Espino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, did you get some members that were hesitant on coming back in so soon? Or what was the reason for to come back to hybrid?
Well, the numbers of... The COVID numbers were up a little bit, and they haven't gone well, and they haven't gone back down. There are a number of town meeting members who have expressed concern. And so to be able to accommodate that, I think it's the proper thing to do is to have a hybrid meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
No, no questions.
Mike?
No, sir.
Jim?
I just concur with you. I think it is the right thing to do, just so that everybody... We get as much attendance as possible.
Just one question from me. What are the guidelines around special legislation? Like, when's the clock up from the state?
The clock is up in June, I believe, or July. So, this will be the last time we can do this.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we approve the Maytown Meeting Hybrid version for this year.
Second.
All right, motion's made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero. Hybrid it shall be.
Sounds like a deal. Thank you.
Keep up the coming in. All right, next up, item four eighty, we have a proclamation commemorating the Armenian genocide. Do we have anybody here? Thank you for coming down. If you could just identify yourselves for the record.
Yeah, my name's Stefan Delgarian, and this is Alex Markarian. I'm a member of the Armenian Local Armenian National Committee. And Alex is a Burlington resident, who recent graduate from Burlington High School. We have a bunch of Armenians in the community. On behalf of the Armenian National Committee, we've been expanding. Last year, we started to expand to have towns commemorate with us. And Burlington did join us last year, and we're thankful for that. And we're very happy that they're joining us again this year. We have about eighteen towns from all the way from Peabody, all the way to southern New Hampshire, Lowell, Havel areas that have been joining in, and we're hoping to get more and more towns. From our point of view, it's, you know, it's a very hard time in our history, very painful time. And for it to be denied by the perpetrators and not being, you know, held accountable for it is means a lot. And it's important for us to keep doing this and to remember other genocides. And, you know, genocide's happening today, right in front of us. And it's important that we recognize when genocide's occurring and that we hold the people who are accountable accountable for it so that someday we can minimize or eliminate this hatred that people have and commit these horrendous crimes. So, we're, again, very thankful for Burlington to participate again with us this year. And again, thank you from me and there are some Burlington residents here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for inviting us to join in this with you. I think you're right. I think that it's important that we talk about things because when we don't talk about them, I think it fosters more confusion, more opportunity for hate and bigotry. And, you know, this is an opportunity for us to stand as a community. You know, we say we're here for every Burlington resident, and that is absolutely true, no matter who you are. You know, so I'm glad that we can be doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you. Any comments from the board before we issue the proclamation? Mike, Mike and then Mike.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this tragedy is not widely known. It's not widely reported as other tragedies like this. So, I am certainly proud to put my name on this proclamation and be part of that collective voice to get that information out there and share it with the community. So, thank you for alerting us to this again this year, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your profound words. You kind of stole my thunder. I think it's important that we recognize and remember things like this because if you look around what's happening in the world now, it seems like, you know, some same things are happening. So, it's important to remember what happens and the results and the consequences of these type of events. So, thank you for coming out tonight.
All right, and with that, Jim, you have this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a quick thought. It makes me sad to have to read a proclamation that contains the word genocide, but it makes me happy to know that Burlington is at least one of the few cities and towns that are acknowledging this and giving proclamations in remembrance of this genocide. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Armenians fled increasingly, increasing opposition from Ottoman government during the twentieth century, coming to America in search of freedom, where they could live in dignity without fear and oppression. And whereas, like many ethnic groups, Armenians settled in Burlington seeking a safe place to live, raise their family, practice their religion, and educate their children, they became an asset to the growth and vitality to the town of Burlington through their strong work ethic, family values, and civic pride. And whereas the Armenian community of Burlington is comprised of the children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren of the survivors of the Armenian genocide. And whereas 1.5 million Armenian men, women, and children, victims of genocide, perished in the Ottoman Empire from nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three, therefore, the town of Burlington does hereby issue this proclamation in remembrance of the Armenian genocide of nineteen fifteen and encourages residents to take part in observance of Armenian genocide Memorial Day on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, given this twenty-fifth of April, two thousand twenty-two, by the Burlington Select Board.
Thank you. Get a picture too. Good picture.
If you want to roll that, can you take a shot of him?
I got it. Get over there and I'll take a picture. You want to get in there?
I'm not from Burlington. These guys are... Well, by the way, so you can get the seal.
Okay. We'll be back in a minute. So, get anyone in here. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to a gentleman who makes us sign too many documents in one evening. Item four eighty-one, the approval of the sale of general obligation bond, bond anticipation notes. Mr. Gino, my wrist is tired because of you today.
You should have moved the money gender.
You sort of did, but... Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. As you saw in your package over the weekend for this meeting, we're here tonight to approve the general obligation bond in the amount of four million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or four million, five in total when you look at the premium to StoneX Financials at a total true interest cost of three point one six percent. And a BN of thirteen million, four hundred, forty thousand dollars at an average cost, and that went to Jeffrey's LLC on an average weighted interest cost of two point zero seven six oh percent. The face value of the interests, as you looked in your documents, will show a higher amount. But because of our strong rating at AAA, we get a premium on our bond. So, the net factor is taken into consideration. We had three bids on the general obligation bonds. We had four bids, all competitive, on our BN. And the bond anticipation notes are for one year. So, we'll be back next year to deal with that. So, what I'm requesting tonight is approval, for the record, of the two bond issues, the general obligation bond and the anticipation note from the board.
Okay. We'll open this for discussion. Jim, you want to go first?
Gary, is there any way... I know it's a lot of numbers here, but is there any way to summarize the net savings on this?
Well, these are new bonds. Jim, I should have mentioned, when I came before you a few meetings ago, we talked about our resizing and reissuing some bonds from two thousand twelve. As the economy continued to shift, that savings we thought we'd have a million dollars plus shrunk down to four hundred and fifty thousand. And as we got closer to the issuance date, it didn't make economic sense to do that. So, these are brand-new notes.
All right. Now, the only other comment I'd have is thank you to you and the rest of the financial team because maintaining that AAA bond rating is what puts us into the position to do something like this. But thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Right, Mike?
All right, lost my place on here. But no questions, but I did want to, I think it's important for the folks at home to know, they didn't see the letter from, I think it was standing in pores, the management letter to their investments and how we earned that AAA bond rating. It's just remarkable findings from their team there. Management skills, the financial skills, planning, I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on. I mean, just the town and everybody involved should be really quite proud of the comments we get to achieve those, that AAA rating. Wonderful job.
Thank you, Michael. It was interesting. It was a new team this year that reviewed us or interviewed us. And Paul Sagino was there, John Denizio, Melissa, which I'll get her last name incorrect. And myself. So, they were very impressed with the knowledge, the base, the continued financial acumen of the team. And Melissa was very helpful in talking about the future and the outlook, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Jim? Well, thank you. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to add, Cooper Sluckman running this comments about the bond rating. Just the town's in good financial shape, and you guys do a lot of hard work, and it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
To your team, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's always the whole team. I know that...
Yes, it is.
It's a bloodface in this room, but if we... We need a much bigger room if we invite everybody every time.
It would be at the auditorium.
It would be at the auditorium.
Virtual.
We have a suggested motion here. I don't know if it was in the packet, but I'm holding it. For anyone who'd like to read it.
I'm closing too.
I can tell you, Mr. Chair, that motion was suggested. What was in your package was the vote of the select board, which included every single item. This is a consolidation which Bond Council will accept. It was recommended by them.
Chairman, I move that the select board approve the sales of four million, two hundred and twenty thousand general obligation bonds and thirteen million, four hundred and forty thousand general obligation bond anticipation notes as further detailed in the vote of the select board that is provided by Lock, Lord, Bard, Bond Council and provided to each select board member.
Okay, motion's been made. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero.
Thank you to the board. I want to thank Lynn for making sure you all signed them and get them correctly.
Everybody signed?
Might want to check them twice.
Could be downstairs going over that again.
All right, next up, we have another proclamation. It's a night of promotions, proclamations. We got a whole bunch of stuff going on tonight. Mr. Nugent, why don't you come up and join us here at the dais? Paul, do you want to speak to this? Do you want me to speak to this? No, look, I... Our Economic Development Director, Melissa Tocless, has been working very hard to not just grow, you know, the business sector in this community, but to foster relationships. And I know that she reached out to you. And, you know, I think that this is a great proclamation. This is a moment that we can take and just be really happy about. You know, and the intent tonight is to just have the board thank you for everything that you've done for this community over the last thirty years. You know, if you'd like to take a moment and just tell the public who you are and what you've been up to.
Sure. My name is Steve Nugent. I'm the owner of Steve Nugent's Karate Institute in Burlington, and I'm celebrating thirty years in business in Burlington. I really just want to say a special thank you to the town. It's been an amazing ride. If you told me thirty years ago that I'd be here, I would not have believed it. Since I opened in ninety-two, we've gone on to open ten locations now. Burlington is still the flagship. And I'm looking back on it, I'm saying, if I'd gone to any other town, I don't think I would have made it. It is so pro-business. It is such a tight-knit community. If you treat them right, they'll treat you right. I've had an amazing relationship going back to, I'm sure some of you guys remember, like Bill Bedrow at the rec department, Joe Impemba Senior, the Tiggeses. It's just been an amazing, amazing relationship, especially with parents. When anyone entrusts you with their children, it's a responsibility that I take very seriously. It's humbling. It's just been an amazing ride. Thirty years is a long time, but it's been great. And I really want to give a special shout-out to my staff who's been with me, some of these people have been with me for thirty years, and the Burlington Recreation Department. During the pandemic, restaurants somehow became the poster child for the pandemic. They didn't have it nearly as bad as we had it. If you owned a business, like gymnastics schools, music schools, martial arts schools, the children's industry got smashed because our customers weren't vaccinated. At least restaurants, you could get vaccinated and maybe get some people in, so we were really crushed. And the Recreation Department in Burlington reached out to me and said, Steve, anything you need, we will advertise Zoom classes for you. We will do anything to keep you propped up. And I was just speechless. I'm just, that's the love I have for Burlington and everyone in it, the police, the fire, the Board of Health, just you guys. So, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you and Burlington.
All right, call us from the board. Joe, you want to start?
Sure. I think it's fantastic that a business can strive for thirty years. It's not an easy thing when you're self-employed between this payroll of taxes and everything that goes on, health insurance. Being a small business owner, I understand how you feel, especially with the pandemic that happened. I can't congratulate you enough on thirty years. I wish you another thirty.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, I got to say, your business is one of those businesses that this community relies on for sponsorships time and time and time again. There's Steve Nugent's Karate Studio out there sponsoring events all over town. You've been doing it for decades, and I just want to say thank you so much. You've been a great corporate neighbor and...
Thank you.
I wish you, again, I wish you also an additional thirty years.
Thank you.
My first question is, do you want another thirty?
Yes, I do. Absolutely. I was talking to them earlier. I said, here's to another thirty. And they said, you sure you want another thirty? Yes, definitely.
So, just kind of to echo what Joe and Mike have said. There's one, if you looked at one business that's been involved in community activities, town events on the common, I think it's always Steve Nugent's, Steve Nugent, Steve Nugent. By the way, are they in the parade this year?
No, but they should be.
Okay.
Here you go.
I'm going to circle back to you on that.
But no, you're, I mean, you're always supporting the community events. I'm glad you said that the community supports you, but you support this community. It's always Steve Nugent's out there, Steve Nugent's out there. It's, I can remember decades going back to, like, day to day and all that stuff, celebrate Burlington. But one other quick question. In thirty years, how many people have you trained?
We were trying to figure that out. And Burlington alone, it was getting into the tens of thousands, which is crazy. I said, that can't be right. But when you look at our greenhouse programs, plus the rec programs, and it's not just the karate program, but it was the cardio kickboxing program, the self-defense programs, the beat the bullying programs, all these different things. And we got up the other towns, it got into the hundreds of thousands, which I was like, I just can't believe it. Because I started teaching originally at the Mad Maggie's Racquetball Club. And I was just in the, you know, the studio there, and I had like six people.
Now everyone knows what thirty is.
And to think that it's been tens or even hundreds of thousands is mind-numbing. It's just...
Just a quick follow-up. No pun intended, but look at the impact you're having on people. Look how many people you've, how many lives you and your staff and your studios have impacted. Thank you.
I'd just say one thing, too. It's humbling, too, that those five and six-year-olds that I taught, they're now coming in at twenty-eight, thirty with their five and six-year-olds, and that makes you feel old. But it also makes you feel like you did something right. Or that kid that was on the wrong track, that we get them back on the right track, and they come back and say, I graduated high school, I graduated college, and they thank you. And it's, you know, I'm a lucky guy.
Thank you, Steve, for thirty years. You're a Burlington institution. And pun intended, you've taken a lot of punches and thrown a lot of punches for the community. And that's exactly what I was thinking of, is how many kids walk through the door and not just the lessons they learned through martial arts, but the life lessons, the lessons in confidence, the lessons in believing in yourself, the lessons in striving to do better and advance. And those are life lessons that you were teaching these kids, and that's just an amazing thing. And thirty years of it is just awesome. So, thank you very much for what you've done for the community and being a great business partner for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I won't repeat everything that's been said, you know. You have striven, strove, you know, to be an amazing community partner, to help foster that relationship with us, and it shows. It shows. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you've done for this community, the children and the adults who live in this community. And with that, I'll let Mr. Espino read the proclamation.
All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas this year marks the thirtieth anniversary of Steve Nugent Karate Institute, and whereas the goal of Steve Nugent's Karate Institute is to teach adults and children the intricacies of karate while improving confidence and instilling a powerful sense of purpose. Whereas Steve Nugent's Karate Institute has worked with over ten thousand students over three decades in Burlington and provides demonstrations at Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Brownies, and Cub Scouts. And whereas Steve Nugent's Karate Institute has contributed to our community in many ways, including to B- Cat Telethon, Pop Warner, Little League, hockey, school fundraisers, and annual student demos on the common at the town day. And therefore, the select board of the town of Burlington, Massachusetts do hereby recognize the contributions of Steve Nugent's Karate Institute towards teaching karate and other martial arts and celebrate their valuable contributions to our community, given on this twenty-fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, keep this train moving.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Next up, we have number forty-three, the MSBA vote of statement of interest.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Corner from the school department is here.
Bob, hiding in the back.
I didn't see him back there either.
I did not. I was looking online. I thought you were going to be...
There wasn't any room until...
Yeah. Full house tonight. Take it away. The floor is yours.
And thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity to be here on behalf of the school committee. We are seeking the approval of the select board to support us and submitted an MSBA statement of interest. MSBA is the Massachusetts School Board Authority. This would be for the high school. This will be our eleventh time submitting for this. While it does not cost us any money to submit, just a little bit of time, the potential reimbursements that could come back to the town if we were selected are extremely large. So, it is worth it for us to submit, and having the support of the select board is instrumental in that. So, thank you.
All right, we'll open it for questions. Mr. Espino, you want to go first?
Yeah, so this one's for the high school. He said, how many different times a year can you apply for this type of grant money?
So, only one time. They open up the window one time per year, and you are only allowed to submit one statement of interest that is a priority. So...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
No, he keeps going at it. Keep running that camera.
Mike?
I guess I think this is the tenth time since I've been on the board that we've supported this request. I sure hope you get it this time around.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, no questions. Again, it comes up every year that we at least make the attempt. If we don't make the attempt, we won't... We may or may not get it, but if we don't do it, we definitely won't get it, so.
Bob, what have been the reasons they've been denying us?
They don't give us an official reason. No, so what happens is, however much money they collect in taxes per year is what funds any MSBA projects. And depending on the number of submissions, that's limiting to what projects are selected. It does not matter that you submitted the prior year or how much money they got last year. Every year is new. So, we start from ground zero every year.
And with the submittal or the project for Fox Hill, do we think that that'll negatively impact our chances for this?
I do not. It really depends on, again, how much money they collect and who else submitted, what projects they deem is either more important than ours or if ours are more important than other projects in the pipeline.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, you miss a hundred percent of the shots you don't take, right? So, if there's money that we capitalize on, great. All right, if there are no other questions, I know that there was a somewhat lengthy specific form of vote that was applied to us. Now, Bob, to be clear, does this have to be read in full? Now, Bob, to be clear, does this have to be read in full or can we just accept it into the record?
MSBA request that it is read into record, but I believe that being it submitted as read would be acceptable. I would feel more confident if it was read into record.
Okay, thank you.
Being conscious of time, I understand the request.
You know what? No, well, Mike, why don't you go ahead and read it?
Oh, thank you. Let the good guy do it. So from the beginning of required votes all the way from there?
So from, from resolved?
Oh, resolved, okay. Resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty second, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Burlington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances.
And this is why I'm glad we're reading.
Has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest, form dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, for the Burlington High School located at one, two, three Cambridge Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, oh, one, eight, oh, three, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number five, replacement, renovation, modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility. And priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. This specific project will update classrooms and replace science labs to be a more effective learning environment, replace aged out heating and ventilation cooling equipment that is in its original construction from nineteen seventy one, replace interior building components, lockers, lighting, fire alarm, et cetera, and provide updated security improvements which will extend the life of the existing facility and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
All right, well, Mike takes a deep breath. A lot of paper shuffling happening while we were doing that. Did we do something wrong?
There's one amendment.
So he has to read it again?
No. In the second line, change from school committee to select board.
I'll make that revision.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to make sure we get all the, everything right. It says form dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Should that be twenty twenty two?
Yeah, because the form, so the form, I'm sorry, through the chair. The form is the SOI submittal form that they're requesting. That date is not to be changed. Tonight, the April twenty fifth date is the night that it's presented in front of the select board.
I want Mike to read it three times.
So that's correct. Do it again with select board?
No, so just make, make an amendment to your motion.
I will amend the motion to change the word school committee of Burlington to select board of Burlington.
Okay. All right, so it's been, you're seconding? All right, so it's moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good to see you in person. It's been a while.
You as well. Thank you all.
All right. So item four eighty six, we are postponing?
Yes.
Okay. I think this is to four eighty seven. I believe Sergeant McDonough is here. Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Sajid McDonough in charge of our traffic division here with us. Several years ago, he and I engaged in a conversation about fines for tickets here in Burlington and the fact that they hadn't been updated in many, many years. So I asked Don Sajid McDonough if he would look into that and try to put us in the average range of nearby communities. You know, typically when we set fees or fines, we like to be somewhere in the middle, not the highest, not the lowest. And I do believe that our fines had sort of fallen a little bit below market value and to the point where they probably weren't much of a deterrent to anybody who was, you know, gonna get a ticket. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sajid McDonough and he can just sort of talk through the listing with the board and have, answer any questions you may have.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The impetus to this process started in two thousand nineteen when we got a complaint from the rec department about individuals utilizing, utilizing the parking lot at Simons Park by the basketball courts. People, it's a four hour maximum parking time there during the spring, summer and into the early fall. And I think what was happening was some individuals were doing a cost benefit analysis and realizing that they could park at Simons Park, pay a five dollar ticket every day and at the end of the week, they paid twenty five dollars for parking while they jumped on the MBTA and went into Boston. You know our police department, you know how we solve problems and how I operate. We tried to deal with it with a conversation with some repeat offenders that lived in town to no avail. They just realized that the dollar amount at the end of the, at the end of the week was worth it. So as a result, we needed something to fall back on when we can't communicate and we can't solve the problem through just a conversation. So we need something to fall back on that's gonna have these folks reevaluate that cost benefit analysis and realize at the end of the week, they may be paying more and it may be more beneficial them to move on or find another location to park. In the interest of the members of the community, they need to utilize those parking spaces for all the rec programs that are there. So with that, also taking a look at some of the other parking fees and the other ticket fees that we have, by no means is this, as we've done with handicap parking, a revenue stream for the town, but we do need to have some type of deterrent, as Mr. Sagrino said, that will have some teeth and will deter people from committing some of these violations. So with that, yeah, an analysis was done around surrounding towns. And what you have before you that was submitted earlier is a list of some of the changes that we want to make. And then there are several that there are no changes that we think that they suffice.
All right, let's open it for the board. Mike, you want to go first?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, these are certainly modest increases. I don't see any, I don't really have any issues with this. The one that caught my eye though, I could tell you because I got a ticket up in Nashua about twenty years ago for my left, left wheels to the curb or something like that. Is that what the wrong direction parking is?
No, so wrong direction parking is if, take Center Street in front of Town Hall, for example, where traffic runs in this direction towards the fire station. If somebody will pull in and face the police station, that would be the wrong direction.
Okay, that's same thing. So their left tires would be to the curb and that's the wrong direction.
Correct, yep. Yes, sir.
I didn't know we had that here, but I know they have it in Nashua. Still sting, I'm still upset about that one. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just putting a clarification, Saj. On the Simons Park, the very first one is twenty five and then it's fifty after that?
Correct. So our thought was for that person that is intentionally utilizing the parking spaces for that reason to jump on the T that aren't responding to the corrective action from a lesser fine or a conversation, then increasing that fine helps again with that cost benefit analysis on their end to deter them from parking there.
Be interested if someone found that cost efficient down the road. If they do, I might want to go work there. No, I'm good with these. These look, they need to be updated. This is not, like Mike said, it's not a big jump, it's modest jump. I'm okay with all these.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I didn't know, realized they were so low. I would, I would have parked illegally a lot more before I was elected, knowing these fees. But yeah, they definitely need to be updated. So good work and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim?
No, I think it's great. I think that even these ones that you want to merge together, I think that's good too, you know, to prohibit and restrict it and all that kind of stuff. Put them, and then you don't have to worry about wording and everything else. So I'm in favor of it all.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'm glad that you did the cost benefit analysis and looked at everything. I, you know, I, I come very heavy handed at situations. You know, like for me, like I'd be like handicap parking, five hundred dollar fine. Like I just, you know, like if, if somebody is gonna be that egregious, especially for repeat offenders, hit them hard the first time and hopefully they get it. You know, I mean, I'm glad that we're raising it from ten dollars to twenty five dollars. Like that will hopefully be a deterrent. But, you know, maybe in a year's time, we can see how it's working. If it's a strong enough deterrent, if not, then, you know, we raise it again. You know, because I'm, I personally am not afraid to hit a little harder when it comes to reminding folks that, you know, what they're doing is wrong. So that's just my own two cents for.
Chairman, if I have a follow up?
Yeah.
Jerry, what's the, I'm trying to discern the difference between the all night parking ban when restricted and the winter parking ban.
Exactly. So that's one of the things that we want to merge is that one of the town bylaws is obviously the winter parking ban. And then there's the tickets, and I don't know the historical context. I wasn't in traffic, I don't know if I was in the department when we got the ticket books that we have now, whether it was just a generic book that was generated with these violations on them or if they were town specific. So in merging those two, it allows us any areas in town that are labeled, you know, no overnight parking. It just merges the two and it'll create an area for us to indicate these subsequent offenses and take notes on. So it's just more to be efficient and create more room on the ticket.
All right. Any other further questions?
When would this take effect, once we?
Great question. When would this take effect?
Let's, I'd have to look into the turnaround time to get the new tickets. I don't think we have, I think we have one box left of the old ones. So there's no sense in throwing them out. And the turnaround time to get new tickets to come out. I don't know what the turnaround time, but I apologize. I probably should have prepared for that, but a couple of months.
I would just recommend that we make them effective as of today and then we'll institute them as we receive the new ticket books.
Great, okay. Steve, sorry, Jim, and then Steve, come on up.
We don't have to, there's no state agency or anything, we have to, has to approve these or anything? We can dictate this on our own, correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Town, Town Council advises this process through the board.
Okay.
All right, Steve?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make one observation and I'm totally fine with the fact that people park at Simons and we need the spaces for the park during the summer. I get that. But if you take a look along the Route three A corridor, there's not really a great place for people to park who have to commute into the city of Boston. So for folks who live along three A, it's great and within some walking distance. But I want the board to be aware that it's important to provide opportunity for all of Burlington to be able to commute into Boston and to find a spot for people who can park somewhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
You know, that, Steve makes a good point that has been brought up in the past from time to time. We have no municipal parking areas. A fair amount of people that do commute into the, into the city on the bus and so forth. Probably worthy of future discussion.
Yeah, for sure.
Public, private partnership because a lot of it's privately owned.
Right. All right, all right, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the police parking fine increases.
Second.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Jerry here? Are we gonna talk about the motorcycle?
No.
We're postponing that.
Oh, you postponed that?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, it wasn't. My listening ears on, sorry.
Sorry, it was during the hullabaloo of her eggs in the room, so.
Still think about that parking ticket. I remember it vividly. My mom was furious.
Sorry. All right, next up, four eighty eight, we have an update from ISAC. Come on down, gentlemen. For the record, please identify yourselves.
Sure, I'm Steve Moore with the ISAC Committee.
And I'm David Hughes.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming before us tonight. I know that we had pressured you for slides last week. But if you want to share up or if you have newer slides you want to share, we can follow along with what we have.
Okay. I don't know if I have WebEx on this.
Would you want me to share it?
If you could, that would be awesome. Well, thank you very much for taking the time to meet with us tonight. As you recall, we were back in front of this board last June to ask the board of selectmen to approve the cybersecurity policy. And you did, thank you very much that night. And what we wanted to do was give you an update of where we were with the cybersecurity policy as well as talk about what the directions that we want to go on as our next steps. So over the past six months, sorry, move on to the next one. Thanks. The MIS department hosted six training sessions for all the department heads over the course of last fall. And these sessions were extremely well attended. I think we had most, if not all, of the department heads there. The conversations and engagement was phenomenal. Everybody did a great job bringing pertinent questions, brought some tough and challenging questions. And I felt like they were really motivated and engaged to, to work on the cybersecurity policy. In addition, the MIS department continues to receive additional support for cybersecurity training for both Burlington schools and the town employees. We started our readiness program, planning, and we'll get a little bit into it in a future slide. And we've had two departments submit their drafts. And then the ISAC committee supports the recommendation to add a half time network administrative position, which will allow some of the critical system administration administrators to focus more of their time on the cybersecurity policy. And then finally, the school committee is in the process of adopting the policy. So they're reviewing it and we'll have our first reading, I believe, tomorrow night. Next slide. So as we talked about in, back in June, the policy implementation is key. And there are three phases of that. One is the attack and attack prevention and readiness. This is the area where we can do the most upfront to ensure that our cyber, our cyber systems and processes are as secure as they possibly can be. The second part, and God forbid we would ever have to use it, but if we did, would be the attack response and service continuity. How would we, in response, how would we respond to an attack? As well as how would we ensure that the community could be serviced continually without interruption? And then finally, the attack recovery and return to normal operations. Next slide, please. And so as I mentioned earlier, this was, this has been the area, attack prevention and readiness, where we spent most of the, most of our time. And what we can't stress enough is the importance of good hygiene, email hygiene by the employees of the Town of Burlington. The most common attack vector into an organization is through email. One objective of an attacker could be to get an unsuspecting victim to click on the link that results in ransomware being downloaded and run on a local computer. As you recall, ransomware attacks can encrypt your sensitive data and the key is provided to you after paying a ransom if it's paid to you at all or if it's provided to you at all after that payment. And also, any particular sensitive data could be exposed for others to see. The second is, another objective is to disguise the email as coming from someone that the recipient may trust to, to get the receipt, to take some action on behalf of the sender to defraud the victim. These are called social engineering attacks. And last summer, you may recall, a social engineering attack resulted in three million dollars being transferred or stolen from the town of Peterborough, New Hampshire. What looked like a regular invoice was, or a regular, you know, change my account number and ended up resulting in one fifth of their budget being stolen. And so it's critical that we continue these training sessions and practice drills on, on proper email hygiene and, and that we have a hundred percent participation in that. Second, next slide. And so the next pillar that we really want to stress is readiness planning. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, the Burlington Police and Fire Department participated in a multi-town active shooter drill at the mall. And it's the, and I don't have to stress this to the board, that the practice is, practice is crucial in understanding the type of response you need to the type of situation. What we're trying to do in our next phase is to do this kind of situation. What we're trying to do in our next phase is to do this kind of practice and planning. So that way, if an attack were to come to the town of Burlington, we would know what to do and how to handle that. Next slide. And so, one of the things that the ISAC Committee would like to do is to make sure that all the town departments have a readiness plan in place. One of the things that we were hoping for is that the cybersecurity, this readiness planning would begin after the initial training sessions back in January. And it has to some extent, but we would like to see it accelerated. I think both David and myself would be more than happy to work with one of the department heads or a couple of the department heads to prepare a template that we could use. So that way, the other departments can come onboard more quickly and therefore, we can get a much more comprehensive readiness plan for the town departments. Next slide. And then finally, the last phase is how do we recover from attacks? And the key step here that I just want to highlight is to confidentially, confidently and quickly restore files from secure backups. And so, one more slide, please. So the recommendations that we're making at this time is that we complete the essential prepariness plans for all town departments. We ensure that the staff is trained in the specific responsibilities to ensure the effective execution of those plans. We incorporate an expectation of cybersecurity hygiene, including email and employee responsibilities. And as I mentioned earlier, require 100% participation in those phishing email trainings. And then conduct a simulated attack walkthrough, which is not a physical exercise, but more of a tabletop exercise where we have discussions about the various different types of scenarios and what each department would do in response to that. Would you like to add anything?
No, I think that's great. I think there is one more slide though, right?
There's the, do you want me to go through this, the bottom line slide? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. So I think I've come through this slide, but so that despite the progress, we feel that things are moving a bit slowly, way too slowly. We feel that at this point, we're not ready to handle the impact of a cybersecurity attack if it were to happen tomorrow. We would like to say, though, the administration has been very supportive of the ISAC Committee efforts and we do appreciate the work that Paul and his team are doing.
Yes, I would just like to add to second what Steve said. A lot of good work has been done, but given the charter that the ISAC has, we feel a real sense of urgency about moving forward. And that leads to the bottom line conclusions here. I think the people that we've worked with in the MIS Department are really pushing as hard as they can. It's just that work needs to be now carried into the departments to develop these plans. But thank you all for the support that you've given these initiatives.
Absolutely. We'll take questions.
All right. Mike, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anything we can do as a board to help expedite the process or speed things along that would make things easier for you guys to help keep the process moving at a pace that you feel better about?
Yes, one area I feel that would be helpful is just making sure that like the training and the participation rates stay up and you see what those, see what those results are. To support us in preparation of the readiness plan, ask questions, please get involved. We'll be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
And then I think once the plans have been developed to support the idea of a walkthrough, the tabletop exercise, which I think is really key, because that will expose any gaps in the planning that can then be closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
No, I had no questions. I just wanted, Mike had my question, so glad he asked it. But I think you guys are doing a great job, so if there's any further along the way, just let us know what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think this is, you know, this is known a matter of if. It is most likely a matter of when. We're certainly not immune to this. The surrounding municipalities have experienced it. It's in the news quite often, 60 Minutes at a piece recently, where our grid is, attempts are made, attempts are made on our grid daily. So, you know, given our AAA bond rating and everything, kind of make Burlington a rather lucrative target. So let me thank you for your experience and expertise and willingness to be part of the committee keeping an eye out for us. And I'm certainly happy to support your efforts and whatever we need to, you know, stay ahead of the curve on this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the update. This is, I could see the outline of it coming, starting to come together. Steve, I think you referred to this as phases, implementiveness in phases. I'm not sure if you can even answer this, but is there any way of trying to give a timeline of when we'll get to the end? Is that possible? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I think it's possible. We can take it back into committee and come up with a timeline. I think, I think what's important is that the town meeting support the new position for the network administrator. So that way, we can free up someone, Joe, and our MIS Department's time to work more on the cybersecurity stuff as well.
And then just a follow-up to that. When we do get there, to the, when all the phases are done, now we hire a new employee. We're going to have to have like a training day, new policies, because we bring on employees, you know, every now and then. So we'd have to, you know, when we get to that point where we've got everything in place, now someone new comes along, how do we get the word or the information to the new employees?
So, well, we hope that as we add stuff, as we go along, we don't wait till that last day. We add it as we go along. So like, it would be, I know that from the cybersecurity training, becoming a new employee would get you on that list, I hope, like right from the first day. But there may be some opportunities to have like an hour or two worth of training for just cybersecurity hygiene and policy that you would have to complete as part of an onboarding process, for example. And then it would be a continuing process going forward after that. Things evolve over time, so one of the important parts of this is to make sure that people's, you know, are continually refreshing their training.
No, I get that. Thank you. I appreciate that. What I was trying to convey was, okay, we've done this, we have a new policy, everything's in place, now we hire new staff. Is it through HR? Is it through their department head? I'm just saying, maybe we have to plan for the future after all this.
I see. Okay. We can, we would work with Paul and the administration to figure out where the right place for it is, yeah.
All right. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
If I can just add, I think in addition to the changes that happen internally, the external environment is somewhat fluid in terms of the new forms of attacks and the things that attackers are doing specifically. So we need to stay in touch with that. But then the ongoing training piece is really important to build a culture of cyber awareness. And that, people agree, needs to be a top-down emphasis. And with that emphasis, there will be, you know, ongoing training and awareness at all levels.
Just real quick, I wouldn't want a new employee to come on, be given an email address, and then not have the training, and then all of a sudden, you know, we've lost out on something. That's all.
Got it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Also, to kind of build on that, I know that when I was a part of the emails for the trainings, there were a lot coming fast and furious, inundating my inbox. And I had heard that from a couple of the staff as well. Do we have a good cadence on that now? Do you guys know from MIS if we have like a more regular cadence in terms of how the staff across the departments are completing the trainings?
I believe, I believe that they have slowed down and have established a more regular cadence, but we'll make sure of that.
Okay. I just, you know, knowing that human error is, I think, one of our larger enemies, I want to make sure that we don't burn the staff out, you know, that they're like, ah, another one, another one, and then they're not getting their job done or they're not focused. And then all we're doing is creating more opportunity for an error to occur.
We certainly would want them to be critical of all the emails that come in and not just, you know, get desensitized because they've, because the one that does come in is going to be the one that they accidentally either click or respond to and that's the one that gets them in.
Right. Or the off-text message, right? Now it's beyond email. There's attacks coming from all different types of media.
And don't forget the old-fashioned ways, the typical phone call.
Right.
Right? So we're asking, you know, for people to just use good judgment in terms of, like, if our account number is changing, we'll have good controls over that.
Yeah, absolutely. So from what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the next kind of big hurdle for you guys, it seems like, is getting all the departmental readiness plans set up. And so I think that your suggestion of creating a template to help the departments along would be a huge help. So, I mean, definitely, please do that. Because I think like, you know, when you've got your, I mean, we all know this, right? When you've got your main chunk of work in front of you for your job, and then you get one more thing stacked on top, that thing winds up getting deprioritized because you've got all the other things already in motion. So, you know, to aid in making sure the departments can get that done, that would be great. And then I would love to see, I think somebody mentioned it, just what a timeline looks like to get us through a walkthrough, right? If that's our next big milestone after the readiness plans, from here to readiness plans and then from readiness plans to walkthrough, what is that going to look like? And then we can go with that with Paul and make sure that from a timeline perspective, we're not crunching on stuff and, you know, adjust as we need to based on the realities of life and hopefully get a good, a good solid mark on where we want to go. But.
We'll give you those timelines.
Okay, awesome. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank the committee members for all their hard work and also all the efforts that the department heads have put into this at this point. We're very grateful to have so many talented residents in the town to assist us with this. Cyber attacks are real. We get them on a regular basis. Other communities have been victimized and it's great to have this citizen effort to help move us forward. I will say, I just want to add, I think the participation rates are a little bit higher when you consider those folks that actually use computers, I think participated at a much higher rate. And this is one of the discussions we've had with the committee. For example, many of the firefighters don't even log on to the, to the network for months at a time and, you know, public works, employees that are out in the field. So I think that those numbers maybe just be a little bit deceptive in that I think a lot of the people that actually use computers did perform the training, so.
That's great.
We're really grateful for all the efforts of this committee and its members.
Awesome. Yeah, maybe as we move forward, we can bifurcate the data to see, you know, those who are workstation-related, what their trainings are against, you know, like Paul said, DBW fire, you know, who maybe aren't touching their computers as regularly.
Yeah, and some of the things we talked about is how do we set up safe terminals for, say, firefighters to use if they're not going to be using computers on a regular basis, to have terminals where they could check their emails that may not be connected to the network so that they're much less of a risk factor for those types of employees that don't use computers. And, you know, just come up with some ways how we can segregate, segregate those things out to keep the network safe, but also provide those employees with whatever minimal use of the computer that they need to do their job.
Yeah. And Paul, you're right. A huge thank you to the departmental directors who, I know Steve, David, we've talked about this, is their acceptance and willingness to engage in this process is great to hear about. I love it and I thank all of them. A huge thank you to the entire ISAC, you know, for everything that the committee is doing and to you both as well, David and Steve, you know, for everything that you two were doing. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Paul, four eight nine, development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The development agreement for the Rogers Piano is not ready, so that will necessitate a meeting before town meeting for that one. Spoke to the attorneys this afternoon. And as I mentioned in our memo, I just wanted to point out for you that because the network drive rezoning is part of a PDD, the actual agreement occurs within the zoning. So there's not an actual vote required, but I did want the board to be aware of sort of what that arrangement was.
All right.
So we don't need to do anything with that one this evening.
Very good. All right, next up, we have four ninety, a public hearing, alteration of premise liquor license. While the proponent is on their way, take a motion to have this read or submitted as written, as printed. I forgot my cheat sheet, Lynn.
Public hearing, the notice to be read into the record.
We don't want to read it. We want to accept it as.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept the notice as written.
All right, see, there we go. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Public hearing is now open. Sir, please tell us who you are and what you're here for.
Absolutely. Good evening. I'm Bruno Marina of the Burlington Marriott Hotel. We're here to discuss our improvements to the hotel as far as soft goods, vinyl, paint, and minor renovations without construction in the hotel.
All right, take it away.
So we are basically, it's a bit, some items for our restaurant, our health club, and our event space to have improvements to the equipment. Again, paint, vinyl, new carpeting, and new furniture for the restaurant. We're also going to be putting at M Club, which is our VIP concierge lounge, in the back area of the restaurant. I'm just asking for the approval from the town to move forward with that.
Okay. I'll take first round of discussion from the board before we go to any public participation. Joe, let's kick it off.
I've looked over the plans. Burlington Marriott has done a great job up there the whole time. I have no problem with anything they're looking to do up there. It's all improved by the Board of Health, I believe.
That is correct. They have been, yeah.
Wanted to change a sink or something like that in that area.
Yeah, so we're just replacing the existing kitchen equipment with brand-new kitchen equipment. So in its existing form with no changes at all to the plan.
Those things where I think the pandemic hit them hard in the beginning, they're trying to re-bring it back and I'm totally in favor of this.
Great. Thank you.
Mike?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Jim?
Just one quick comment as to what Joe said. I know the hotels were hit hard during the pandemic and if this can help revitalize Marriott as well as other hotels, I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you.
Mike?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. So because this is a public hearing, I will open it to the public. Is there anybody in the room who'd like to speak and be honest with us? Anybody online who'd like to speak?
So I'll make a motion to close public hearing. See if there's nobody out there.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to alter the premises of liquor, transferred Burlington Management LLC, doing business of Boston Burlington Marriott, One Burlington Mall Road.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Have a great night, everyone. Thanks again. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up, four ninety. All right. Next up, 491, we got use of the town common for parks and park programs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you had in your packet, um, a request from the rec department, which they give to us annually, uh, to sort of reserve the common for some of their typical, uh, summer, spring, fall, uh, programs and programming that they have on the common. Uh, this helps us, uh, schedule, um, additional things on the common when we have their, uh, dates up front. Uh, so that's basically, I just want to approve, uh, the rec department's use of the common on those dates and times, um, so that we can plug it into the calendar and, uh, get the summer going.
Excellent. Uh, any comments on the board? Mike, so are you?
Uh, no, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, should we, like, do each one of these individually?
No, I was just gonna say, we're doing good on time. Take it one by one? Break out the setups, too?
Discussion.
All right, Mike?
No question.
All right, Jim?
I got nothing.
All right. Uh, I appreciate that the rain dates and the setups are in there. So thanks to Brennan and his staff for, uh, breaking this down for us. All right, uh, if there's no further questions, comments?
Make a motion, uh, uh, use of the town common for parks and recreation. All dates above.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Five zero zero. All right, 492, Approval of Warren Articles. John, we're doing good on time. How long is this gonna take?
I won't ruin that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your, in your email, there was, I mean, in your backup, there was an email from me about, uh, last meeting, we went through the first half of the, of the Warren articles and said we'd be back this meeting to go through any of the additional Warren articles that we need to vote on. I shared with you a list of five articles that, that, uh, the chairman and I spoke about that we would look for, um, a vote from the board on. And there are some articles listed there that just will either be withdrawn or aren't ready yet. Uh, and then if the board would decide to take a position on any of the other articles, we could do that tonight. So I thought what I would do is just run, run through the five that we have to vote on tonight, answer some questions on that, and then the board can decide if they'd like to do anything else.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the first one is, is Affordable Housing Coordination Services. Uh, you probably saw in your town meeting backup, there's a detailed memo from, from Whitney Haskell about what this is. And the purpose of this is, is to provide some funding for some affordable housing consultation services. So this would, this is a com- um, combination of the administration and the housing, Affordable Housing Partnership Committee. Uh, so that committee is looking to get someone in to sort of do the day-to-day. It would be a, uh, part-time, it would be a consultant, uh, so it wouldn't be an employee. And it would give us a chance to get that, get that committee, uh, some support, bring in the experts to, to help get it, you know, some best practices in and, and go over the way we do things now and sort of, um, see where we are, get us a baseline of where we are, and then reassess and see if there's anything else needed. Uh, the difference between this one and most of the Warren, other Warren articles we talk about is that this would be in through raised and appropriate, appropriate. So this is, this would go right into the, um, attachment. Okay. So the next one is the Fourth of July Parade. Nick, I'll, I'll give the overview, and then you can just correct me if anything.
Yep.
That you'd like to add to it. Thankfully, the, the plan is for the Fourth of July Parade to come back in its origin, in its former, uh, form this year, uh, after a hiatus from COVID. And normally, the committee asks for town meeting to fund $20,000. And then there's quite a bit of support that comes from the business community and individuals through donations. Given that we're just coming out of a global pandemic, we're not quite sure what the donation environment is gonna look like. So in order to be able to do the parade justice, um, the committee thought that it would double, it would, um, increase the, the request from 20 to $40,000.
Yeah, just to, just to add to that, um, you know, we did the rolling rally last year. You know, but the, the donations from sponsors were just enough to get us through essentially with the funds from town meeting. And knowing that, you know, businesses are still very much hurting, um, you know, we don't foresee, uh, speaking as, you know, Chair of the Fourth of July Committee, we don't foresee the funds being there from, we're, we're gonna try our, our darnedest, as we always do. But, uh, yeah, you know, to, to do the whole kibbukaboo, we are asking the town to help us out this year. And, and we're actually meeting, uh, tomorrow morning with Ways and Means Subcommittee discussing with them. So, uh, we'll see how that conversation goes. But, um, you know, I'll, I'll probably abstain from this, seeing as I'm, you know, Chair of both. But hopefully this, this body, uh, supports the parade.
Uh, next article, Article 30 is, uh, CPI adjustment for the elderly. So this is sort of, uh, culmination of a process that this board and the Board of Assessors have been working on for a while, on how we can provide some relief to the, to elderly, to our neediest population in town. What this, it's, it's sort of a housekeeping vote that by accepting the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5, C, Clause 41D, uh, alphabet soup there, is, it allows for the, um, the income and asset limitations that are put on what a person over 65 can earn and have, uh, in order to qualify for the exemption. It gives an automatic, uh, increase every year based on the CPI. So rather than having to go to town meeting every year and vote a new number, this, you accept this provision. We don't have to do it anymore. As that increases, uh, it automatically increases those limitations, um, for our exemption.
Yeah, just keep, we'll, we'll take questions at the end.
Yep. Uh, 31 is very similar. This is, uh, Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund. This is also in an effort to provide some relief to our, uh, senior citizens. This is similar, it's, it's similar to the, uh, scholarship program in town, the check-off box. This would be handled the same way. There'd be a check-off box for donating to this fund. Uh, taxpayers could add something to when they're paying a bill to us, just like they do for the scholarship foundation. And similar to that, there would be a committee set up that would, uh, consist of the Board of Assessors, the assessor, the treasurer, uh, that would be able to issue money from this fund to those that submitted an application. Uh, the application process would go through the COA, the way the current exemption and abatement one does. Those would be confidential, those applications. And then, um, that committee would be able to issue out any funds that they collected that year. Uh, the last one that the committee, um, for, for the committee to vote on is Article 32, which is the Community Preservation Act. And as you heard from, from, um, that group that has been here before, and this is, would just be to approve, it would be supporting, um, approving this to go on to the ballot for the citizens to decide whether to accept the Community Preservation Act. So. So Chairman, those are the five that we talked about that we thought we required a vote on tonight.
Yes. So I'll pause for any questions or comments from the board?
For me?
Feeling good? All right.
Yeah.
I think Article 30 is important. I mean, you know, we've been talking about this for a while now, and it's great that we can, or that's, you know, self, you know, adjusting. And then I just wanted to say on the record, uh, for the Community Preservation Act, uh, after we spoke about it, a couple of people called and were concerned, you know, that it wa- it wasn't looking out for everyone in the community. My response, the same as it was then as it is now, is, you know, I believe that the people who I spoke with all fall under the opportunity to opt out. All right? And so I think it's important, as this moves forward, that the discussion of being able to opt out of that program is important. Uh, and that the entire town gets to decide. This isn't just the five of us making a decision. This isn't town meeting making, this is the entirety of the town making that decision. So just wanted to say that again. Gentlemen, I'm happy to take all five of these as a single vote.
Are you gonna abstain from one?
Right. Thank you, Mike. Um, all right.
I'll take it. Why would you need to?
You don't take any upstands, man?
From the Fourth of July Committee?
No. All right, no. All right, then we'll, then we'll take it as a group. That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when you approve, uh, Articles 25, 26, 30, 31, and 32 to go on the town warrant for May Town Meeting.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Five zero zero for each and every one of them.
Mr. Chairman, do, um, does the board wish to take a position on any of the other?
On the ones at the very bottom there?
Uh, either the ones in the middle, the ones in the middle are, um, are, not, you don't require, they aren't ready to vote yet anyway.
So there's 27, 29, 34, and then 35, 340. Yeah, so just as a, as a point of discussion of the board, I didn't know if, if anybody wanted to, uh, have the board take a position on any of the following. Listen in the backup, it was 27, 29, 34, or 35 through 40. We don't typically vote on these things. Um, so I figured we'd just say yea or nay. Do you vote or thoughts? Just a groan from Slickman Runyon?
Struggling with the, uh, 27 there. They've been, uh, Ways and Means, Paul, uh?
I'm not sure. Uh, um, member Runyon, as you know, I'm not in favor of this article, so I was being against it. But, um, certainly up to the board's decision. I know, um, uh, Slickman Runyon and myself have been just, just trying to, uh, work with the historical committee. They have, uh, they have a lot of stuff stored in a lot of places. And I'm not sure if the answer is immediately just to jump to more space, uh, without sort of, uh, finding a way to better utilize our existing space in the historical museum. So, um, I attended one of their meetings fairly recently, and, um, I think we, uh, we had a great, uh, discussion. And I think there's a willingness to try to, to sort of get, get there. But at this point in time, I would not, uh, personally, uh, I'm not in favor of Article 27, the historical shit.
Nothing there that I necessarily feel the board needs to, uh, comment on. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, letting town meeting make that decision. I don't think anyone actually come to us and ask specifically for our endorsements or, um, my opinion, uh, fine, just let them be.
All right. Everyone's okay with that? All right. Then we'll, we'll hold off on those, John, and, uh, let it as fall as they may. All right. Okay. Uh, 493, Subcommittee Reports. Uh, Jim?
Uh, nothing for Mr. Paul.
Okay, Mike?
You know what? I, I, uh, I've just ended this, so bear with me if I, um, misspeak. Uh, but our, uh, Police, Fire, and DPW will be participating at an event, uh, Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 to, uh, 1:00 PM at the Burlington Mall. This is for the, for the kids, called Touch a Truck. So, uh, I know Mr. Santos is pretty, he's pretty excited about sending some of our equipment down there. And so do these other, uh, police fire vehicles as well. And this is in support of the, uh, multiple, multiple Myeloma Research Foundation. So again, that's, and I'll try and bring it up again at our next meeting if I, if I will get a word up. But Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Burlington Mall. An opportunity for the, for the kids, oh, similar, smaller version of our Truck Day on the common. And the proceeds, or the, the benefit is, is to the multiple My, Myeloma Research Foundation. So thank you to our Police, Fire, and DPW for their participation.
Absolutely. Um, is that everything?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe?
Just a real quick, uh, up at the Land Log for us, we've got somebody up there cutting down trees. They're not supposed to be cutting any of the trees down, so we have the police department working on it, along with conservation. Don't know what to say. Just the public out there, you're not, it's not a place to cut down trees. And if you can do whatever you want, it's owned by the town of Burlington. So, uh, that being said, uh, I've got nothing else.
Mike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we had that moment of silence at the start of the meeting. I did want to extend my public condolences to the Cavino family. When I started on the planning board, uh, Ernie took me under his wing. And, um, we spent two, three hours at his, uh, kitchen table, teaching me how to be an elected official and all the zoning rules and regulations. And Ruth would laugh at us in the corner and make jokes and bring us also whatever we needed, like coffee or water. And it's a, a very happy memory. So, uh, she had a long distinguished, uh, uh, tenure of helping out the town school committee and the million boards and committees and the work, some of the stuff I've heard that she's done with the, uh, some of the seniors in town. It's very admirable. Um, I also graduated high school with, um, her daughter Julie. So I just want to extend my condolences to Ernie, Ernie III, Julie, and Amy, again, for a big loss for the town of Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, uh, Transportation Committee, um, is meeting on May, what are the Wednesdays after this coming one? May 4th, maybe? My head's all discombobulated. Uh, making really good progress in terms of, um, identifying, um, you know, smart ways to kind of bring transportation to a more unified, uh, location. So more to come on that, but just wanted to give a quick update. We heard from ISAC. Um, so I dropped the ball, uh, from our last meeting. Mike and I were supposed to meet about the DEI, uh, special meeting. And then I got caught up in, in my new day job. Um, and so I didn't have a chance to get ahold of him. So, um, basically coming out of this meeting, the goal is for he and I to connect as we were supposed to based off our last meeting. So, update there. And then just kudos to the rec department, uh, for the treehouse going in, in the woods at Simms Park. Gonna be, just, I, I saw some of the plans. It's gonna be amazing. Very, very cool. You know, as, as Paul knows, I was, I was barking up that tree, no pun intended, um, months prior. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm excited to.
Years prior.
Was it years?
Yeah.
Oh, man. All right, well, you know, time, right? In any case, that's, that's all I really have for updates.
Due to a generous, uh, donation, so thank you.
Yes, due to a generous donation, which is fantastic. And I mean, you know, just a bit of a theme of tonight, right? The, the giving and the reciprocity of the, the community here, you know, and Burlington is just, is wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, just an update on that. At the DAC Subcommittee meeting today, they said that, uh, groundbreaking will start in August for the treehouse, and it should be done in six to eight weeks. So by late, uh, early fall, the kids jump right on it.
That's amazing. Just in time for the new school year. Uh, all right, Paul, Town Administration's report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything this evening.
All right. Uh, well, with that, um.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion made. Seconded. Seconded. All those in favor? All right, aye. Opposed, abstain. All right, five zero zero. Good night, everybody.